Call the 30th meeting of the Mayor and City Council to order meeting in regular session on Monday, April 22, 2013. Please note, if you wish to be heard at this meeting, please sign the speaker list provided on the table at the side of the council chamber. The President has the right to limit the amount of time each speaker has for each agenda item. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak for each agenda item. We'll have the invocation led by Reverend Warren Litchfield, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Moe.
Please join me in a moment of prayer. Almighty God, we gather this evening hour to conduct the business of this city. We offer our prayer for our mayor, for the President, for the members of the City Council, and for all in authority. Grant unto them a sense of justice, strength, and wisdom as they perform their duties on behalf of all thy people. We commend this city, this county, this state, and this nation to thy merciful care, to being guided by thy divine providence. We may dwell secure in thy peace. We expressly commend your gracious care and keeping, all the men and women of our armed forces at home and abroad, our fine rescue, and our law enforcement community. Defend them day by day with your heavenly grace, strengthen them in their trials and temptations, give them courage to face the peril which upset them, and grant unto each a sense of your abiding presence wherever they may be. Remember those upon a bed of affliction; comfort those that mourn. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Raoul, would you please call the roll?
Ms. McCrary?
President.
Mr. Ricks?
Here.
Mr. Lez?
Here.
Ms. Nicholas?
Here.
President Smalls?
Here.
Mayor Moe.
Agenda item six. Actually, before we do that, let's go to agenda item five. Approval of the minutes of the 28th meeting of March 25th and the 29th meeting of April 8th, which we will, yes, which will defer
Thank you.
for our next meeting. So I'll entertain a motion, council, to approve the minutes for the March 23rd, 2013 meeting.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman McCrary?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Ms. Raoul, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
I believe it's the 25th.
I'm sorry, 25th. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree.
Yes.
I vote yes. We'll now move to agenda item six, reporter of the Mayor and City Council, and I'll start with Councilwoman Nicholas. Do you? Okay. Let's redo that again. We'll move to agenda item eight. No, that's quite all right, ma'am. Second public hearing with possible action on ordinance number 1770, an ordinance to approve an MXT concept site plan, number 833, West Side School Board Property, Van Dusen Road. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. Mr. Brendel will read the file.
Thank you, Mr. President. MXT conceptual plan number 833, ordinance 1770, was filed on March 18, 2013 by the State Highway Administration, by the Maryland Department of Transportation, 707 North Calvert Street in Baltimore, Maryland, as property owner. N Strip Matter Land LLC, 9102 Owens Drive, Manassas, Virginia, I'll make that Manassas Park, Virginia, 20111 for a conceptual site plan approval for parcel A, also known as Van Dusen School Site, consisting of approximately 19.88 acres, to be incorporated into the overall development of West Side, which shall include the residential townhouses and commercial retail development. On March 21, 2013, a request asking for comments was sent to Ms. Mary Lehman, council member of the Prince George's County Council, Ms. Rita Floyd, clerk of the Prince George's County Council, the Maryland State Highway Administration, Prince George's County Health Department, the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, the Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation, the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission, the Maryland Department of Planning, and Prince George's County Schools. Responses were received from the following agencies: the Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation dated April 5, which is part of the record, and the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission memorandum of March 28, which reads as follows: We reviewed the MXT application number 833 for West Side School Board Property on Van Dusen Road, which was filed to allow for the development of 80 residential units and retail uses. This development is not subject to Subtitle 27, which is the Prince George's County zoning ordinance. The property lies within the municipal boundaries of the city of Laurel. The subject 19.88 acre parcel was annexed into the city and placed in the city's MXT zone in September of 2012. The Prince George's County Planning Department reviewed the rezoning request and submitted the following comments: That the 2010 approved Subregion 1 Master Plan and Sectional Map Amendment recommends medium-density residential and commercial development for the subject property. The city of Laurel anticipates mixed-use development on the subject property, and the zone permits the type of development at densities similar to those permitted by the county zoning ordinance. We believe that these comments are still valid. Your residential development with 80 townhouses and supportive retail uses are consistent with the master plan's recommendations. Sincerely, Fern Perret, Planning Director. Also, on March 21, 2013, a request asking for comments was sent to the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department, the Laurel Volunteer Rescue Squad, the City of Laurel Fire Marshal, City of Laurel Police Department, and the City of Laurel Department of Parks and Recreation, as well as the Department of Public Works. On March 25, 2013, the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department provided response, which has been made a part of the official record. Response was also received on March 26, 2013, from the Laurel Police Department stating the department had no comments. And on March 28, 2013, a response was received from the City of Laurel Department of Public Works, and that memorandum was also made part of the record. On March 25, 2013, a notice of the filing was application was sent to all contiguous property owners. All return receipts were received, with the exception of James Chee, 6823 Iron Bridge Lane, and, excuse me if I misspell this, Ganyu and Jabike Adewale, 6909 Iron Bridge Lane, Teresa Spikes Hamilton, 6907 Iron Bridge Lane, Katina Onley, 14310 Bonnet Lane, Teresa Williams, 14314 Bonnet Lane, and Barbara Waite, 14304 Bonnet Lane. File contains a certificate of publication verifying this application in public hearing was advertised as required by law on the April 4 and April 11, 2013, editions of the Prince George's Sentinel. A memorandum from the City of Laurel Planning Commission to the Mayor and City Council dated April 15, 2013, reads as follows: At the regular meeting of the City of Laurel Planning Commission held on April 9, 2013, the following action was taken on the subject application. On motion by Mrs. Bettman and seconded by Mr. Welford and carried on a roll call vote of all members present, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the concept plan of MXT application number 833 for the Van Dusen Road School Site property/West Side as presented in the technical staff report to the Mayor and City Council. And that concludes the reading of the file, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Brendel. I'll open the public hearing at 7:09. I have Mr. Ed Gibbs signed up to speak. Good evening, Mr. Gibbs.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Edward Gibbs, an attorney with offices in Largo, Maryland. I represent Strip Matter Land LLC, which is the applicant in this case, and, just bear with me here, make sure everything was turned off. And Mr. Rob Strip Matter and Blake Escherich of Strip Matter Land are with me this evening. I would like to give a little bit of an overview, if that's permissible. The, of course, the application that we're here on this evening is this 19.89 acres right here, which is what we now call the State Highway Administration parcel. And of course, the Strip Matter parcel
Mr. Gibbs, would you mind just moving the mic just a bit closer?
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Now, of course, the Strip Matters originally owned 64 acres that went all the way down here into what is now the interchange area, which was rezoned to the MXT zone by the Prince George's County Council when they adopted the master plan and the sectional map amendment for the Subregion 1 planning area by adopting CR 58 of 2010. So all of that property was zoned to the MXT zone. The State Highway Administration had come to the Strip Matters and said, you know, as part of the construction that we're going to need to build the Conti Road interchange with I-95, we're going to have to take 25 acres of your property. And so we said, well, listen, you're going to take all of our access, and we're not going to be able to get out. And so that started the State Highway Administration looking at this parcel, which at that time was owned by the Prince George's County Board of Education. And so as part of the overall settlement agreement, which the State Highway arrived at with Prince George's County and Conterra, relative to the Conterra taking, this Board of Ed piece was transferred in fee simple to the State Highway Administration. The sole purpose of the State Highway Administration acquiring that parcel of land was to enable us to have access into our property. Now, as the process evolved, the State Highway Administration said, listen, why don't you just take this entire piece of property, and we will do an acre-for-acre exchange for the usable area of this property as part of our satisfaction of fair market value compensation for the 25 acres that we were going to take from you down here. And with some, you know, with some hesitation, the Strip Matters agreed, because of course, this property, the State Highway Administration parcel, was zoned in Prince George's County ROS, which is a low-density residential classification. And then, when the property was annexed into the city, both annexations occurred simultaneously, the State Highway Administration parcel was assigned the PI zone here in the city, because that density was roughly similar to the ROS zone. We thereafter filed a conceptual site plan for the Strip Matter parcel that was left, which is just under 40 acres, and the State Highway Administration signed an application form for this conceptual site plan right here, which is what's before you this evening. They also signed, at the same time that we filed the conceptual site plan application for the 40 acres, they signed an application to rezone this property to the MXT zone. And I think that the letter that Mr. Brendel read into the record is really simply a logical follow-up from what is shown as amendment number 27 in CR 58, because back at the time that the Prince George's County Council adopted the Subregion 1 Master Plan and Sectional Map Amendment, and they left this property in the ROS zone, they did, however, in amendment 27, indicate that if there was a land swap that had occurred, now this is, of course, long before, long before the State Highway Administration entered into its agreement with Conterra and Prince George's County. But the County Council said, if there was a land swap that occurred, which allowed the Strip Matters to get a hold of this property in return for a swap for a park parcel, then it would be appropriate for this property to be zoned MXT. That language is in, again, amendment 27 in CR 58 of 2010 from the Prince George's County Council. Of course, the actions of the State Highway Administration in subsequently acquiring this piece of property in order to give the Strip Matters access effectively abrogated any opportunity for a swap for parkland. However, the recommendation and the finding in amendment 27 that this property would be appropriate for MXT zoning remained valid. And I think that the letter that was read, signed by Fern Perret, the Planning Director for the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission, really is just a recognition of the language that appeared in CR 58 of 2010 as amendment 27. So by your action in January of this year, this property was rezoned to the MXT zone. We could not have a conceptual site plan approved at the time the conceptual site plan for the larger Strip Matter parcel was approved, because that was occurring simultaneous with the rezoning application, and we had to get this rezoned first. So we came back in and refiled a conceptual site plan just for this 19.89 acres, which is what is before you this evening. That being said, the entire development is proposed as a unified mixed-use development, which will have the name West Side. It will consist of here, 500 multifamily residential units, which are under contract to Mill Creek. This fuchsia-colored area here, which is triangular in shape, is going to be the site of a hotel, which is under contract at this moment, and of course, we selected strategically the highest elevation for the hotel site, so it had prominent visibility from Interstate 95. This light-green area is proposed to be a maximum of 80 residential townhomes. And then, the tan area will together support a maximum of 200,000 square feet of retail commercial uses. Now, again, only the portion of the conceptual site plan which deals with the State Highway Administration is before you this evening, but I wanted to explain how it all fits together. This road, which we've called West Side Boulevard, is coming in to provide us access off of what I now call Van Dusen Road. And that was the, it was the obligation and responsibility of the State Highway Administration to provide access to the Strip Matter parcel, because failing to do that would have necessitated the State Highway Administration condemning and compensating my client for the entirety of their property holdings, all 64 acres, not just the 25 down here. So that's pretty much the posture that we find ourselves in this evening. We are obviously, at the appropriate time, going to have to come in with a final site plan, which will consider how this property will be laid out and how it will work with the larger Strip Matter parcel, but we do have this public road coming in, and we have recently actually met with your staff and have agreed that we're going to have a public road section coming from this circle straight to the west to provide access into the hotel site. So that's where we find ourselves. You know, I would like to incorporate by reference all of the evidence and documentation that we submitted into the original conceptual site plan hearing, which was before you in January of 2013, which addresses the purposes of the MXT zone and the criteria for the approval of a conceptual site plan. I'd also like to incorporate the staff's analysis in their staff report, because I think it's very thorough and very comprehensive. So with that being said, I'll be happy to respond to any questions, but that's sort of how it all fits together. You know, the annexation of this property is envisioned in your master plan, and of course, that occurred back in the fall of 2012. So we now have this zoned, the State Highway parcel zoned MXT. We're seeking a conceptual site plan approval this evening, and of course, the Strip Matter parcel, the 39-plus acres, was already zoned MXT and now has an approved conceptual site plan. It will be certainly addressed in extensive detail when we come in with our final site plan, but we did submit into the record an exhibit, a buffering exhibit, which we will implement when we come in with the final site plan. But effectively, what we did is, in order not to have actual retail development to the east of the entrance road, this is the Willshire Estates, single-family detached subdivision to the east, and in order not to have retail development over in this area, we actually pushed this access road over to the east. But we do have a buffer plan, where we're going to construct a berm and install extensive landscaping along that berm in order to provide a further buffer. Of course, Willshire Estates itself has a tree conservation area within its subdivision along this north-south area that I'm tracing with the laser. So the buffering techniques will be analyzed in detail when the final plan comes in, assuming that we're successful this evening. So thank you very much, and again, I'll be happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. I have no one else signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who'd like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing at 7:20. Council, you've heard Mr. Gibbs, and you've heard Mr. Brendel's reading on the file. What's your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman McCrary?
I recommend that we approve ordinance number 1770.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Raoul, please call the roll.
Ms. McCrary?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Aye.
Mr. Lez?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholas?
Yes.
President Smalls?
I vote yes.
Mayor Moe.
Thank you. We'll now go back to agenda item six, reporter of the Mayor and City Council, starting with Councilwoman Nicholas.
Thank you, Mr. President. My colleagues and I, we pretty much were attending most of the events together, but I really enjoyed the yard sale at the Laurel Armory, the community garden, and we also attended the installation of Lee Ann Hodges at the Oakland Presbyterian Church. That was a very nice ceremony. And Emancipation Park was very nice as well. I want to thank Mike Losky for just always, his staff, and just the wonderful team work that you all do. I thank you for that. I also want to thank Paul and his staff for the quick response. I had a constituent issue, and you all resolved that within two days, so I thank you for that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Nicholas. Councilwoman McCrary?
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the events that Ms. Nicholas mentioned just a moment ago, I attended the Civil War encampment activities at the American Legion. I'd like to thank Karen Lubidecki and Jim McSiney for their help in explaining the events as they were ongoing. I also stopped by the indoor yard sale. It looked very busy. I helped the July 4 was successful in their fundraising attempts. I attended the groundbreaking for the home makeover for Brent Laverne Dedman on Laurel Avenue. A lot of people came out, a lot of people coming together for the benefit of a neighbor, great cause. Emancipation Fun Day was on the 18th, another event for our neighbors, went very well, well-attended. And I attended the electronics and shredding event down at Public Works on Saturday morning. And there were at least 130 citizens by 9:00, and it opened at 8:00, so that was a very good showing. Stopped by and chatted with neighbors down at Goody Lake for the cleanup on Saturday morning. Mr. Losky was being roasted at the time, so I was glad I could save him. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCrary. Councilman Lez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, I want to thank you for wearing out my grandson at Emancipation Park. The right tools were there. You don't have to have anything fancy, just give him some blue blocks, and he'll wear them out. I want to congratulate Mr. David Floyd, art teacher and technology integration specialist at St. Mary of the Mills School. This year, he was one of the 10 Golden Apple Award nominees from the Archdiocese of Washington. This is St. Mary's fifth year in a row that they've had one of their outstanding teachers receive this prestigious award and distinction. That concludes my report.
Mr. President? Thank you, Councilman Lez. Councilman Ricks?
Thank you. It has been a busy two weeks. I also attended the invocation for Reverend Lee Ann Hodges at the Oakland Presbyterian. I want to congratulate her and welcome her to the community. I also attended the dedication of the new ground for the young man at 340 Laurel Avenue. I attended the Emancipation Park celebration. I attended the NAACP signing of the agreement with the city of Laurel. I am announcing that the Laurel Police Department, their program, will take off on April 26. They're going to host this year about 500 children over the period of about two weeks of different days for those different days, I mean, different weeks. But nevertheless, we are prepared, and we will see that happen. I'm sure we'll see pictures of that. The Emergency Services and Transportation Committee is working on a number of issues. I'm going to bring them to the attention of the public that are listening tonight, and for anyone else that has any issues. We're looking at Fourth and Montgomery Street again for the traffic that is moving through that intersection. We're looking again at solutions to the 100 block of Main Street and the tractor-trailer traffic down there. And we're looking at the train station and being prepared for when that construction takes place down there. So we're working with Public Works and the Police Department on all these projects, and we will keep on reporting until we have them solved. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Mayor Moe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple things. Let me send get well wishes again to Frank Mills, also to Patsy Fattis, who's a member of our tree board, spoke to Patsy today. She'll be home tomorrow. Wish them a speedy recovery. Also to Kay Sandel, who's a former employee, our former clerk for the city of Laurel. Wish her a happy birthday as well today. Did have the opportunity to attend the July 4 indoor yard sale, and I want to thank the committee for all their work and those that came out and helped support that. The Laurel Historical Society's Civil War reenactment, again, I didn't get down 2:00 there for the reenactment, but had the opportunity to stop by, well-attended, and I thought it was just a wonderful affair for the community, and the community really did come out and support it as well. As well as the July 4 Bull Roast, that same evening. Did have the opportunity to attend the Reverend Hodges of Oakland Presbyterian Church, her installation. I want to thank her for the invitation as well. The groundbreaking, as you heard, the Bethany Church Home renovation on Laurel Avenue. Had the opportunity to attend and well-attended by the community. And then, the Community Fun Day at the Emancipation Park. I want to thank all the park and recs, in particular, and the Police Department, as well as other city staff that were present during this event. This was our second event. It was well-attended. Probably about 125, 150 people, we think. Everybody enjoyed themselves, and again, I want to thank all of those that came out and participated, and again, remind those that if they see something, they need to say something. The Earth Day Cleanup at Goody Park. I want to thank Mr. Losky and his staff as well, and those that came out to participate. And had the opportunity to attend the Maryland Conference of the International Society of Honored Women Educators over the weekend. Appreciate the invitation as well, to bring greetings to them. The electronic and paper shredding event went very well. I don't know what the last numbers were, over 250. I don't know what the numbers were. Paul, what's?
425.
Woo, 425. So well-attended, and want to thank Public Works, and actually, I saw Chief McGlocklin out there emptying boxes into the shredder. I'm not sure if they were his or others, so. But I want to thank all of those that participated in that as well. The, want to acknowledge the council, members of the city council, because you heard members of the council talk about the events they've been to and the different events that I'm acknowledging here tonight. These things would not happen without city input, or city employees and their hard work, but more importantly, it has to be funded. Somebody has to pay for that. This council has always been very supportive of community events and made sure that the funding is there, and I want to acknowledge that and thank them for that again. Don't want to belabor it, but the people of Boston, most know, had some tragedies last week, and we want to wish them the very, very best. We were in Boston last December, and a beautiful city. They've done an outstanding job there, and I think they'll bring those, that individual or others, to justice. As well as, let me acknowledge the people of West Texas, and in particular, firefighters that were killed, and those members of the community. Ms. Raoul sent me something today. Even one of the members of the community was a member of the local city government there, so very community impact, and we want to wish them the very best. Tomorrow night is the Laurel Boys and Girls Club Task Force meeting here at the council chambers from 7:00 to 9:00. Also be on our local cable station, if you wish to tune in. The first city hall in the park will be at Casula Point on Main Street at the pool on the 24th next week, Wednesday, the 24th, and that will start at 6:15, 6:30. The Friday, April 26, is our Arbor Day celebration, and it'll be at the Avondale Mill Picnic Area, Riverfront Park at 10:00. Public is invited. And the Laurel Police Department Prescription Drug Takeback Day, excuse me, at Partnership Activity Center from 10:00 to 2:00. That is for anybody that may have any type of And we did this about, I guess, Rich, about a year ago, so well-attended, and want to thank the Police Department in particular, working with other agencies to put this on. Mr. President, I have a couple citations. Okay? As we started last month, we have the Mayor Star of Achievement Award. This is the City of Laurel, the mayor and city council in particular acknowledging the many volunteers that we have on our commissions and in our committees that do it out of the goodness of their heart. They don't do it for any pay or any glory, but these are the people, the citizens, that really do make a difference and really do make a community, and we wanted to acknowledge that. And I want to thank council members for signing on to this program, but he didn't sign on to it because he was getting a Star of Achievement. But the first one I have is for Fred Smalls, our council president, for the City of Laurel Planning Commission. Fred is the representative for the city council on the planning commission, and I'm going to let, I'm going to give you this one, and then I'm going to ask you to read the names, and we'll do like we did before to give picture.
I'll make sure this goes in a very honored spot. I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. John Kish, planning commission?
You can speak to the Laurel if you want, but everybody else is... I've been on the planning commission as long as I've been on the council lot, 11 years. Mr. Kish was there when I arrived, so I know he's been around. He's a very, sort of the anchor of the planning commission with the experience that he has, so...and I've had an opportunity to work with Mr. Kish over the years on other projects, so it's well-deserved. Mr. G. Rick Wilson. (applause). Mr. Wilson, former councilman. And how do I describe Mr. Wilson's contribution to... briefly says, it's absolutely that, and the analytical side, I think, of the planning commission. Mr. William Welford.
Yep.[1147.01][1147.01](applause).
I had the pleasure of sitting next to Mr. Welford for a couple of years on the commission, and some of the sidebars that he and I have had have contributed a lot to some of the advancement of some of the projects that we've had in the city. Monique Collins? Mitzi Betman? Now, when I talk about analytical side, this is the practical side of the planning commission. Mitzi reads, as I do, everything, and she has no problem in commenting and asking a number of questions, but it's all for the betterment of the commission and the work that's in front of us. And the chair of the commission, who's not here tonight either, but Mr. Donald Welford. That's it?
The first is for Arbor Day holiday. Was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our topsoil by, as well as by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for the wildlife. And whereas the City of Laurel has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting opportunities, whereas the City of Laurel Tree Board will plant two river birch trees at the Avondale Mill Picnic Area in the Riverfront Park, and now therefore, I Craig A. Mo, the mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim April 26, 2013, as Arbor Day in the City of Laurel, and encourage all citizens to support the efforts to care for our trees and wildlife and to support the city's community forestry program. And I'm going to present this to Mike Lottsky, who works with the Tree Board as well as the parks and does an outstanding job. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and council. As the mayor mentioned, our Arbor Day celebration this year is this Friday at 10:00 a.m. at the Avondale Mill Picnic Area at Riverfront Park. This award comes because of the work of the administration. As you know, there's a monetary amount that is attached to qualifying for this each year, and through the budgets of Public Works and Parks and Recreation, we're able to achieve that amount and continue to plant and care for the trees in the community. Thank you.
The next proclamation, I couldn't figure out why the fire marshal was here this evening. Usually, he's gone, like, right at 4:00 or 3:00, something like that. No. I know you are. Whereas dedicated members of the International Code Council use a governmental consensus process to bring together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in the building environment to create and implement the highest quality of codes to protect Americans in the buildings where they live, learn, work, and worship. Whereas the international codes, the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation are used by most US cities, counties, and states, these modern building codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, heavy winds, wildfires, earthquakes. And whereas the Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of the communities largely unknown guardians to the public are local code enforcement officials who assume and make sure that we're safe and efficient in our livable buildings. And whereas Building Safety Month code officials keep you safe...did you get that? Building Safety Month code officials keep you safe. The theme for Building Safety Month 2013 encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety, green, and buildings alike. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in their communities, and to acknowledge the essential services provided to all of us by local, state, building departments, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. And now therefore, I Craig A. Mo, the mayor of the City of Laurel, do hereby proclaim May 2013 as Building Safety Month in the City of Laurel, and encourage all residents to join with their communities in preparation and preparedness in building safety. Dave Cope, our fire marshal.
The city, as everybody knows, the city's always been foremost as far as doing fire prevention and doing building construction. We've probably got the strictest codes in Maryland as far as certain things that we require, but everything we do is we do it for the safety. Residential sprinklers, as you know, we're the first one that ever required us to put them in, and like, our new one right now is smoke detectors. We require people to put in 10-year smoke detectors if they're installed, so we're always on the forefront. Mayor, thank you for supporting us, and thank you.
When you go to all the schools and visit, I want you to read that proclamation as well. And I had bigger fun.
That's Marty's job. I just got to... Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor. We'll now move to Agenda Item 7, General Public Hearing. I'll open the general public hearing at 7:41. I have no one signed up to speak for the general public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the general public hearing at 7:41. Agenda Item 9 is the second public hearing with possible action on Resolution Number 3-13, a resolution to make the Laurel Crime Line a city organization rather than a privately-operated commission committee. I've read the title onto the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:41. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Seeing no one, I'll close the general public hearing at 7:41, and I'm hesitating because the clock hasn't moved. What's the pleasure to council?
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of Resolution 3-13.
Thank you, Councilman Ricks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Lez. Council, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Rao, please call and roll.
Aye.
Yes.
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 I vote yes. Agenda Item 10 is the second public hearing with possible action on Ordinance Number 1759, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013. I've read the title onto the record for the second reading. I'll open the public hearing at 7:42. I have no one signed up to speak on this agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Michelle? Okay. I will then close the public hearing at 7:43. What's the pleasure to council?
Mr. President?
Councilman Lez?
Move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 1759, an ordinance to amend the operating budget of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013.
Thank you, Councilman Lez. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Crery. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Rao, please call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
I vote yes. That concludes our agenda. Is there any other business that's come before the mayor and city council? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1738.63]